Good evening and welcome to tonight's Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It's December 5th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're here in the council chambers, which is the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight for our work session, we're going to have a presentation by Garver for the utility rate study.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we do have Cole Niblet with Garver here tonight. This was a project that we were asked to look at a little while back. Basically Doug's team and administration has been working on trying to actually evaluate different providers that can come up with the cost for utility rates for water, sanitary sewer, as well as waste services. We looked at it quite a bit. When we started really looking at it, it goes a lot in depth. But Cole's here, he can kind of talk to you through the process that they will go through. So Cole Niblet is here, so we'll go ahead and get this started. If you have questions after, just let me know, we'll be able to answer them. But like I said, staff's been working on it. I'm sorry about taking so long, but just going through the process has been quite a project. So are you ready to go, Cole?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you Mitch. Good evening, Council. It's good to be here. Like Mitch said, my name's Cole Niblet, Oklahoma Water Team Leader for Garver. Quick aside, actually, one of my very first projects with Garver was the Cowra Water Supply back in the day. Spent a lot of time thinking about Yukon's water supply and infrastructure back at that time. So excited for the opportunity to work with you all again and excited to be here tonight. And we do have a presentation. There we go. So the the presentation, the slides we're going to go through tonight, my intent there is just to summarize the work order we have for consideration on the council agenda tonight. And so this is really just a high overview of the team, the process, and kind of the overall goals of the utility rate study. At any point, if you have questions, comments, voice those, let's make this interactive. Doesn't have to be me just lecturing tonight. So with that, so looking at slide two here, again, really, the three main things I want to talk to you tonight are, one, just tell you a little bit about the team that we have pulled together for this Yukon rate study. Second, that process, we're going to go through some of the scope of work that we have identified in this work order tonight. And then finally, we'll wrap up with schedule and just some open discussion Q and A if you have any. So we can go to the next slide. Sorry, I wasn't sure if I controlled that or not. Alrighty. So I'll start with the top slide here and hopefully this is all right to read. But the team we crafted for this is is really intended to develop a custom rate study for Yukon. We don't take the approach of just doing a save as on a spreadsheet and and developing a rate study in that manner. We really go through and and take a custom approach to each individual utility we do these for. So the names will be a little difficult to read, but our principal in charge for this is Mary Elizabeth Mock. Several of you may know her throughout the past. She's our West Region Water Director, is going to be involved at a high level, but also has experience with Yukon and Cowra. And so I wanted to keep her involved in this project. Myself, I'll be our project manager and point of contact for the project. Like I said, I'll be bringing more of a water wastewater focus as well, as well as the solid waste aspect of this study. Below that, you'll see financial forecast modeling with Ryan Smith. He's really the financial brains behind the operation. He'll be developing the financial forecasts, the models that we use to trend out those revenue projections, cost of service projections, and then develop that rate design at the end of the rate study. And then just a few others, Randy McIntyre is the bottom left there. He is another vice president within Garver, and he has, in a previous life, done a rate study for communities like Oklahoma City, a few other large metros in the area. So he's going to really be a resource to bring kind of that regional perspective and and give us the insight on what other large utilities have done in the region. So I think that's pretty well overview of the team. The second slide there on the bottom kind of outlines the objectives of the rate study. And so I'm going to start at the top right and work my way around to the bottom and then to the left. So really, the the main objectives of this rate study as we see it are, first, identify debt capacity. If the city wants to take on loans and and financing options for these projects, we want to identify that capacity through these revenue projections. Second, identify cost of service. We really want to identify what is your cost of service to operate these utilities projected out? What is your current rate design allow for revenue? And what's the gap? How do we fill that? And still deliver a reasonable and acceptable rates to the citizens of Yukon. Third, evaluation of impact fees. This is one that we can really customize and and dig in and make them Yukon specific for the growth that you all see. This is an idea that we will talk about where we can look at how we can have growth pay for growth, essentially. Look at what new industries or businesses provide the biggest impact to utility systems and how we can work that into impact fees to maybe lessen the burden on residential customers or customers that have been on the system for extended periods of time. Confirm billing system validity. We're going to look at your billing system, see if there's any opportunities for new softwares or new methods to make that more efficient for both your staff and getting bills out to your customers and making that process more efficient. And then finally, on the bottom left there, identify and maintain prudent cash reserves. We always want to develop those rainy day funds for when problems arise that we couldn't necessarily forecast. So we want to develop rate designs that can provide those cash reserves for you. And so then with all of that kind of buttoned up, we'll go into the the last two objectives there, which are develop that long-term capital improvement plan that maybe your staff have already developed, build upon that. And then once we know what capital improvements you want to plan for, that final objective is, okay, how do we develop a funding plan that meets that and a rate design that can meet that capital improvement plan? So we'll go to the next slide. All right. Top slide there, we will roll back the curtain and have you participate in the rate study development. This is one thing I I really emphasize in all my projects. We don't want to get the notice to proceed and then run away for six months and come back and give you a report that you haven't seen. We really want to make this an interactive process. And so Mitch and Doug and the staff are going to be involved from day one, and we're going to have several milestone workshops that we work through. A few that I'll point out. One kickoff in discovery, we're really going to do a deep dive into your existing data, work with the city staff on what data maybe we trust, maybe what data is lacking, and how we can fill those gaps. Milestone two, forecast development and buy-in. That's going to be a big effort in as part of this project, developing that financial model, forecasting different scenarios, looking at different funding scenarios with that rate design and impact fees, and kind of getting into that custom customization aspect of it. Capital three, I mentioned capital planning scenarios. Once we have that forecast developed, then we can look at different timing and size of capital improvements projects that you're planning for, how that fits into future rate increases and the like. Milestone four, rate design and cost of service. That's where we sit down and 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 go through the proposed rate designs, what makes sense for filling those revenue service needs, and how we can potentially phase that in over time. If it's something that we need to take gradual steps, we can absolutely phase that in. And then milestone milestone five, report and acceptance. That's where we would come back to you, the council, with a more formalized report with those recommendations, formalized in that report and 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 put in more concrete terms for you to implement in city code and things like that. Just to give you a quick for a a quick view, when I say financial model, I wanted to give you an idea of what that looks like. That's the bottom slide on the screen right there. And I know that's that's hard for you guys to read, but essentially, this is a snapshot of some of the dashboards that we will provide to you throughout this project. These are going to be things like ending cash reserves at the end of fiscal years based on the projections we have, debt service projected through each year, capital improvement fund balance each year, all based on different rate designs that we'll be comparing throughout this project. And after we go through and develop that financial forecast, we really want to sit down and guide you through the cornerstones of a defensible rate design. And that's what the top slide is trying to convey. Really, if you think about this as as a solid foundation for your home, if we think of that as our rate design, then really, we see four main cornerstones that we're going to be focusing on. One is proper authority, making sure that your code of ordinances, those things support the rate design that you want to implement, and it gives you the ability to expand or tweak on that in the future. Second, reasonableness. We we absolutely understand, we want to be reasonable, we want to be prudent with the rate increases that we potentially consider for end customers in Yukon. We know that's something we need to handle with care. And so we want to compare that to other utilities in the region, other metrics for affordability and things of that nature, and make sure it's a reasonable rate design. Third, rate methodology standards. We want to compare our proposed rate designs against things like the American Waterworks Association. There's many professional organizations that provide national references for those things that really gives you some credibility and and other organizations to lean on for justifying any rate increases we might consider. And then finally, pricing principles. That really comes down to what I've already mentioned with, we have our base rate design, but we can also look at things like impact fees, again, targeted to specific businesses or industries that may impact your system at a higher level. The second slide, the bottom slide here, we will evaluate how growth can pay for growth with impact fees. I've already kind of hinted at that, but I wanted to visualize an example of what we mean by that. And so I know you guys are working through your wastewater treatment plant project right now. And so that's one project we took as an example where, in this graph we're showing here, the vertical axis there is just expenditure in dollars, millions of dollars. And then the horizontal axis is years as you go through that project and maintain that facility. So you may have an initial capital project where you expend a large amount to to build that facility or build that expansion. But then over time, we have to set aside money to maintain that asset. And that this goes for all your facilities, not just your wastewater plant. But as that facility ages, we know in the future there will be more expansions, more rehabilitations coming. So we want to plan for that in your rate design and make sure we're giving you the ability to fund those O and M funds, those main maintenance funds, to keep that facility active, operating well until you reach that next expansion need. So that's an overview of the process and some of the things we're really going to focus on. As far as the work order that is in the agenda tonight, I want to talk just a few specifics there. And the work order really is comprised of four primary tasks. One, we have that system cost of service analysis, and that's where we do the data analysis, develop the financial model, all those projections we talked about. Task two, we'll summarize different rate designs and a rate alternative evaluation. That's where we'll really sit down with the staff and and look at what we're seeing as being needed to meet those revenue service goals, and what different rate designs may be most palatable to the city of Yukon, and how we can tailor those to your citizens. Three, impact fee of impact fee evaluation. Once we establish some rate designs that we think are prudent, then we'll look at how impact fees can be woven into that, expanded over time, things of that nature. And then finally, task four, we're going to develop a comprehensive report, come back to you, the council, probably have another study session similar to this, and and look at implementation of those rate designs. The second slide there, just giving you a summary of the schedule, it's based on each task. And so hopefully, if we get a notice to proceed soon, we'll come back with a kickoff meeting within 10 days. And then from there, we have major workshops planned essentially every 30 to 60 days. And so we'll be working through this with your staff over the next four to six months before there's a finalized product rate to implement. But the target is to be able to implement something before the next fiscal year begins, fiscal year 25 next summer. And that is all the the prepared slides I have. And now I'm happy to take any questions or comments you may have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I just have a couple of things I want you to keep in mind, because I don't know when I'll ever talk to you again. And I want to remind the staff of, what's really important to me is that we keep our summer water rates because in the past, we got rid of that. And in the summertime, a lot of times, we're watering or we're filling pools, we're not using the sewer. The other thing I want to really keep in mind is our $20 Oklahoma City water. It is not done proportionally appropriately for people that use 3,000 gallons versus people like me who use a lot of water. And so I want that to be to fluctuate, that you don't pay the same 20 if you use 3,000. And in the past, it's been where maybe Spanish Cove or not against Spanish Cove or apartment complexes pay $120, but each person should pay that, not just one for the facility.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so just something to keep in mind. Any comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I think they're joining.
Do what? Oh, okay. Anyone else have any comments, concerns you have?
Question. So so tell me a little bit about the success rate you guys have had with the modeling and the financial work that you've done with other communities. So so how has that panned out when you've done this work in other places?
Sure. So what we found is that generally speaking, we can get a really solid idea of what the cost of the of maintaining the the utility system is. We can really get a pretty good idea of that. Projections always have a margin of error and and there's confidence intervals, right? But we can get a pretty good idea of what does it cost to the city of Yukon to operate this utility, whether it's water, wastewater, or solid waste. And so having a good understanding of inflation, CPI, things like that, as long as we can get through that with the data you have, which we we've taken a preliminary look and we feel pretty confident about that. And that's really the foundation that sets us up for for all of those projections. And the other thing I would tack on to that is that we don't lock you in with the rate. Say our report proposes a certain rate design, that's not the rate design you're stuck with for the next 20 years. Typically, we're going to recommend you implement that over, you know, a maximum of five-year periods, just because so many things can change over a five-year period. Just look at the market that we've been through in the last five years. We'll work in flexibility and nimbleness to that rate design so that if you get into the middle of a rate structure, and my gosh, this commodity has gone through the roof, you have an avenue to react to that without being stuck for, you know, five, 10-plus years before you can do anything about it.
Okay.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity.
We're going to wait to hear back from you.
Absolutely.
All right. Our next part of our work session is a presentation via.
I can get, that's what I was trying to do.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to join, but I could not leave them in tight. They were already here. But I think they're ready.
They're ready? Okay, we're going to have a presentation via Zoom by Merchant McIntyre Associates regarding assistance with federal grants.
Okay.
Sometimes.
Still your remote?
Oh, thank you for being honest.
Hello, City Council.
Hello, we can't see you. There you are.
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
We're here, so go ahead and you can start. And just know we're listening very attentively.
Okay, very good. So is the voice that we were hearing Tammy?
No, it's Shelley, the mayor.
Oh, hello, Mayor Shelby.
Hi.
Thank, yeah, thank you for having Brandon and me. Since you have our federal funding action plan for the city, and because you have the document that we prepared, key facts about federal funding, I'll offer just a brief introduction, because as Tammy and Mitch and Jason know, our motto for meetings like this is be clear, be brief, and be gone. How does that sound, Mayor Shelby?
We love it.
Very good. So what you all should know is that Merchant McIntyre and Associates, based in Washington DC, represents local governments like the city of Yukon and other types of nonprofits. So colleges, universities, hospitals, medical centers, as I said, local governments, social service agencies. When people ask me, well, Mark, what's, how is Merchant McIntyre Associates unique? I tell them that we serve organizations that feed people, house people, educate people, and heal people. So homeless shelters, food banks from around the country, we've helped as well. I simply want to emphasize that since we originally reached out to Tammy in September, she and her team have done extensive due diligence. So on October 11th, we provided a free consultation about the federal funding available to the city through both grants and congressional earmarks. Then in October, as a follow-up to that discussion, we produced the federal funding action plan that you all have. And then as a follow-up to a call that we had in November, we produced a document regarding the key facts about federal funding. So with that, Mayor Shelby, why don't we allow you and the council to ask whatever questions that you have for myself and my coworker Brandon Bookout?
Okay, does anyone have any questions? I know there's a lot of federal money out there, and the problem is that, you know, we just, we aren't getting it. And so I love the idea of having someone that will help us to get those federal fundings. Because this, you know, as recently, we've had so much federal funding, but we're just not getting it like we need to. And so I think this will be a wonderful asset for us to be able to get that federal money.
Right. Well, you're exactly right. Because of the $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill, and because of the $437 billion Inflation Reduction Act, you're exactly right, there's an unprecedented amount of money now flowing out of Washington DC to local governments. And so it's really a matter of whether it flows to the city of Yukon or somewhere else.
Right.
And folks, you know, the phrase that I use is that we at Merchant McIntyre have been in this movie, so to speak, many times before, because there are our clients historically, if you look at our client list, historically, we've served who we refer to as the have-nots when it comes to federal dollars. So local governments with doing great work with legitimate needs, road, water, sewer, public safety, et cetera, but simply who do not have the staff to pursue federal funding. And so, put simply, that's why folks retain us, to serve as their federal funding staff. And we're based in Washington, which gives us a big advantage to maximize your federal support.
Yes, you have those connections that we're unable to secure.
Right. Well, we're we're experts in the process, both grants and congressional earmarks. And of course, you all have some relationships with your state representatives, your federal representatives. And so in our experience, that's a winning one-two punch, where you have a local government with with some relationships of their own, and then we are your boots on the ground in Washington DC.
And what is the cost for this?
Yes. So if you if you turn to the budget section of the federal funding action plan, you'll see our retainer amount is there.
Oh, here it is.
We're, yeah, we're often, we're often asked, you know, could you be paid out of the federal grants? And we would love to say yes, because we'd make a lot more money that way. Imagine getting, say, 10% of a $17.2 million Department of Transportation grant. Unfortunately, that's illegal. And as my wife says, I don't look good in orange.
That's right. Neither do we. So $8,000 a month?
Yes. And and the objective, of course, is to take whatever you pay us and multiply that in terms of federal support that comes back to the city. If you look at that one-page document entitled Key Facts About Federal Funding, you'll see the, we've just given you some representative examples of the return on investment that we've achieved for other cities around the country.
So what's your rate of success with other cities? Do you have cities that you're unable to secure federal funding?
The short answer is, we have actually never stopped to measure our quote-unquote hit rate or our success rate. What we measure, Mayor Shelby, is the return on investment. And some of us have been working together since 1994. If you could see Brandon, you'd know that he wasn't one of them. He's only 27. But I'm the, I'm I'm the old guy. I've been doing this now for 38 years. And the the way we have built our business is to consistently deliver good to great to fantastic return on investments for folks like you.
Yeah. And just to build on Mark's point, just a little bit about the return on investment, our objective is to deliver a good to great to fantastic return on investment. And given our $8,000 a month retainer, multiply that by 12, you're at $96,000 a year. Looking at the typical federal grant programs that are rolling out from the Department of Transportation, the Department of Justice, FEMA, HUD, and others, those grant programs typically range anywhere from $500,000 all the way up to $25 million for what's known as a RACE grant, which is for surface transportation projects. You can very easily see how, given those grant programs, it's very possible to achieve the ROIs that we have listed here for our clients.
Other questions? All right. Well, I see that you're proposing a, like a tentative one, a 90-day engagement so that we can kind of see how it works. Is that correct?
That that's exactly right. Because we work with local governments and other nonprofits, we make it really easy for folks to fire us, because we know that you don't have any money to burn. And we know that Mayor Shelby, you, Tammy, others, you don't have a big pot of money in your offices with our name on it. And so really, from the very beginning, we've always offered the 90-day engagement so that you all can measure our added value and strategic thinking. And again, in the plan, you will see that there are very specific deliverables through the first 90 days, so that you all are going to be able to see in black and white, what are the federal funding opportunities that we have identified? What is the award ceiling? What are the fundable activities? And what are they doing? What do the grants do? And so you could imagine, based on those due dates, that a very specific action plan develops essentially immediately. In addition to that, because we would begin likely, based on your decision-making process on January 1, we would begin first by producing with Tammy and her team, an award-worthy congressional earmark request of some significance, I would say anywhere from $1 to $5 million, based on the project that you all decide upon. And again, you can see, based on that, the potential return on investment. And so you're you're going to know a lot in the first 90 days about who we are, how we work, and what the federal funding opportunities are.
Well, I know I go to a lot of networking trainings, and I listen to cities who are getting tons of federal grants. And I'm like, what's the difference? Why are we not getting it? And this may be the reason we're not. That money is out there, and, you know, I think we need our share of the pie. $8,000 is a lot of money. But again, the return could be drastically improve our community life.
Amen. That's, it's it's all about the ROI.
We're not voting on this tonight, are we? Or we are?
Yes.
Oh, we are? Okay. Okay. So do you guys have any other questions that you'd like to ask before we vote on this tonight?
Do you have any cities that you do not achieve the ROI that they put in?
You know, Brandon, help me with this, because I would have to struggle to think of anyone in the last several years for whom we've engaged and not been successful.
Yeah, we've been successful for all of them. The the real question is how successful? So when you look at our list of local governments that we've represented over the last five years or so, we consider an ROI of three to one failure, because it's not significant. And if you look at the ROIs that we've listed on the key facts about federal funding, I think the lowest one on here is 7.5 to one. And in my mind, even that is low.
Yep.
And I also want to emphasize that there are some cases where it takes multiple years to win a significant federal grant award. That's not always the case. But sometimes we might submit an application for, say, $17 million, and it gets rejected the first time around. We get on the phone with the agency staff, we figure out what scored low in the application and what scored high. We go back, we make revisions, we resubmit, and we win. The example that I just mentioned there is the city of Nakadish, Louisiana. We wrote and submitted a $17.2 million RACE Surface Transportation Grant for them. And it took two rounds for us to win that grant.
Yeah. And of course, while we're applying for one grant like DOT, we're also working on several other grants simultaneously, in addition to the congressionally-directed spending, which again, is one. spending, which again, is why folks retain our agency because we've got 20 grant writers. And we can submit a lot of different grants during the course of a year, again, to generate the ROI.
Are you currently working with any cities in the state of Oklahoma?
We are not. And I love that you asked that question because we are assiduous about avoiding conflicts of interest. So if any other city, if any other county contacts us, say, a year from now, two years from now, and says, wow, we see you're winning all this money for Yukon, will you also support us? The first person we call is Tammy.
What is the? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, you all get to decide whether we represent another municipality in the state of Oklahoma. What I've said to my people, again, for decades is, let's represent one local government in each of the 50 states. And we'll have the best local government federal funding practice in the country. We take a similar approach with universities, a similar approach with hospitals, a similar approach with social service agencies. And when you take that approach, it's really, 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 really easy to work with integrity and avoid any sort of conflict. Go ahead. I may have interrupted.
What is the average turnaround once you apply for the grant?
Yeah, every grant is different. And so an EDA grant, you might know, within three or four months. A DOT grant might be, might be six or eight months. Again, what we tell folks is, because this has the added benefit of being true, the federal government never moves as quickly as we want them to, right? And again, that is why we why we write and submit multiple grants so that we have a lot in the pipeline so that when they do, when the awards do come, right, we move on to the next one.
And if it's, if you're denied, can you turn right around and apply for it right away? Or do you have to wait a time period?
Yeah. Again, it depends on the grant. Some of the grants are offered twice a year. Some of the grants are offered on an annual basis.
And some of them, like EDA, for example, are on rolling deadlines. So you can apply when you're ready at any time throughout the year. And frequently, if a grant is rejected, the agency staff will come back to us and you and give us review comments about how they scored the application, what they thought was good, what they thought was bad, and we revise it accordingly.
Yeah. Yeah. We pride ourselves, I say this humbly, but we pride ourselves in turning losses into wins. So if the city of Yukon has, in the last year or two, applied for a federal grant and not been awarded, one of our first assignments during that first 90 days would be to look at the review notes, engage the federal agency, and help you all reapply and win.
And that's just it, is that when you look at all these grants, navigating through them is just unbelievable. And so that would be, you know, you have to know who to talk to, what to talk to, and how to do it. Because I've sat through some of those meetings at some of the conferences, and it's just mind-boggling.
Yeah. To that point, just to be very practical, you're exactly right. It's common for a federal grant to come out and they call it a NOFO, Notice of Funding Opportunity. And it's common that the NOFO can be 100 pages long. What I can guarantee you is that no one at Merchant McIntyre is ever gonna send Tammy or a member of her team like Claudia, we're never gonna send you a 100-page document. What we are going to do is we break those grant opportunities down into six or eight or 10 threshold questions. And we get into a meeting like this with the appropriate people on Tammy's staff. We go through the key threshold questions that need to be answered in a positive way to make sure it's a good fit for the city and that we can produce something that's award-worthy. And if it's thumbs up, we attack the grant. If it's not a good fit, if there's some contortion, if there's some requirement that makes it more trouble than it's worth for the city, we move on to the next one.
And I want to add to that, a strategic advantage of having Merchant McIntyre is that we regularly meet with the federal program officers who have jurisdiction over these various grant programs. And we learn specifically about the competitive preference priorities that they're looking for in award-worthy applications. So ultimately, if we decide to submit a grant on behalf of the city, we're gonna know exactly which boxes we check to score the maximum number of points.
How many local governments are you currently working with around the nation?
Yeah. We represent right now approximately 20 local governments. And if it's meaningful to you all, we're happy to produce a list of those.
Are any of them the same size as our town in demographics?
Yeah. Remind me, the population of Yukon?
What is it? 25,000. It depends on who you ask.
Yeah. So Nakadish, Talladega, Santa Paula, all of those come to mind as approximately the same size.
Thank you.
Yeah, we represent some smaller and some larger.
What percentage of the grants do you guys keep as funding for yourselves? So beyond the retainer, do you guys keep a portion of the grant?
The answer is zero. It's illegal to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. Well, we thank you so much for all of this. We will see how the vote goes. Tammy, do you have anything to add?
No, I just think it's really important. I think it's really important because we're really trying to do some projects that are gonna cost us a lot of money. And if we can get some federal money for those projects, it would really be helpful for us.
And it makes me really upset when I see a lot of eastern cities getting them. But I think it's because they have better contacts there. And so
Right.
Yeah, I just feel like when I go to these meetings and I find out the amount of money that's being distributed and Yukon gets none of it, it makes me mad.
Exactly. Well, we appreciate the time. And since we're now at the beginning of Advent season, I always like to remind people and encourage people that even though the media will never report this, that God lives in Washington DC too.
That's right.
Every session of the House of Representatives begins with a prayer. Every session of the United States Senate begins with a prayer. And we view this business as our ministry. And so, again, we appreciate the time. We greatly respect that you all are public servants dedicated to improving the quality of the life of the people that you serve. And so we'll let you take your vote. And hopefully, Tammy will give us some good news tomorrow.
Right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mark.
Bye now.
Bye. Anybody have any questions for Tammy or the rest of the staff on this? Any concerns? I know it sounds like a lot of money, but again, there's money out there to be had that we're not getting. And in order to fix some of our problems and with our tax, you know, being solely dependent upon tax revenue, we're not going to be able to fix those. And we weren't able to pass a bond issue. So we've got to find some way to fix our roads, fix all of this. Okay? All right. If there's no questions or comment, we're adjourned from the work session and we'll start back up at 7 o'clock.